All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 22nd, now called to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Little Access Programming. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that is recording? I have hearing none. Please stand, adjutant regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being recognized by the chair. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the 710 hearing. So we've got a few minutes. We're going to do a little housekeeping first and then we'll get into the hearings. Oh, I'm sorry. That one has been continued. The 705 applicant EPT Energy Solutions Request for Site Plan Approval has been continued. Definitely escape from that. All righty. We've got a couple of decisions.
Yes. Give your drafts and your packet. Any other comments? We know a number of changes in the order, otherwise, just two sheets aside that are regarding 22430 Faith Ave. and 28 North Berry Street.
Yes, I can't hear anything.
Sorry.
Yes, I can't hear anything.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the proposed amendments?
You have to wait until the public hear. Unfortunately, I don't want to alter the...
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, you're right.
You can take a vote on... Yeah. We should probably wait on discussing it. But we can take a vote to continue the Henshaw Street Energy.
Do you entertain a motion to continue the 705 public hearing for those EPT Energy Solutions?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Couple items that have come up the past couple of days. We've, the town, been awarded two grant, the LTA grants, district local technical assistance grants, work with CMRPC. The first is a zoning diagnostic toolkit. So this is a joint grant, Auburn and Charlton, didn't bring the tolls me, I think it's $18,000 or so between the two towns. They're going to go through all the zoning bylaws, kind of diagnose them, see what some of the priorities should be for updating them and mending them. We're kind of the guinea pigs in the region helping. CMRPC wants to develop this toolkit, all their 40 towns in city. So Auburn and Charlton get to get the trial run. So hopefully it'll last some good results for us if we want to update some of the zoning.
Nice.
And on a related note, there was a jury square design guidelines grant for $8,000. This is a part of the EA grant, economic development grant that the town was awarded last year. This is initially $8,000. I think there's more possibly coming next year to find out the grant total. So they're going to be helping with design guidelines for jury square. So that's, those are the grants. I think Wendy, I invited you to the MDP workshop that we're having next month, since you can't make it February 27th.
February 28th.
Yep. February 28th. Anybody from the planning board would like to attend to invite workshop, getting climate change, you're welcome to attend it during the day on Thursday. So you know, you all have jobs, but if you'd like to take a day off and come to workshop, you're all welcome. Just let me know. If you're interested, I can send you some more details about it. I think that's all I have for updates. I killed five minutes. Sorry.
Can you continue the other ones?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the 715 applicant...
Same one.
What was that one?
Everyone's here for them or not, they might be coming.
They might be coming.
They might have heard from them, so.
Right. Was that it?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
So, I think that's all that says anything.
Anybody else? Have anything?
Can we hear the proposed amendments of the public?
We can't. So it's on 745.
It's a public hearing.
I said the same, I said the same thing.
I had to do it that way.
There are no minutes. There were no minutes in the package.
Right.
Nope.
No minutes. So, talk, I mean, talk amongst yourselves if you have minutes.
We were already doing that, beating up.
I don't want to hear any more of that.
Still saying nice things about them, so.
They still control my 401K. They're my 401K. No one has control over my 401K, so. They still control all my money from 401K, so. I mean, I probably could, but I don't.
It's just wild here, though. It's like nine days. Work jobs are high now, and they're for years now, so.
We have a question for what it's true.
That's refreshing.
Who's the question?
Yeah, well, I do find that all news. I think I'm more.
Oh, I guess so.
Why is it? Sorry.
It's not across from the D.
Oh, yes. Okay, yes.
It was a duplex.
Yeah, they're already working on it.
But it's been...
Yeah.
It was a two-family, so what was their name?
Took me far but made the jump, and then once I...
I know what Wendy's talking about now. I was trying to see where it was.
Just only, just three miles to make the second call for waivers. Just wanted to have your sub reports.
On the...
Okay.
Yeah, that's what...
No, this is what they're going to...
Right.
I've been watching time to back.
It gives like a...
I know. It's just painful, I don't know.
If those are like tag alongs, I'd take you up on it, but...
If I could just eat a whole slice in the fried gosh, yeah.
Maybe I could find you help.
I am too, boy. I don't need to eat.
No, I'm just saying.
That's the problem.
I didn't realize that you found...
Good thing I can't read.
I don't know. Sometimes I feel like I really do need to.
Yeah. Oh, here it is right there. Yeah.
Can you get the street view?
That's pretty good, huh?
That's before the fire.
There was no dam, that was before.
Yeah, it's 2011.
Focus getting behind.
Almost there.
Sometimes when you look at like the photos for work-related stuff, it's going to be like the person in there, and they have to Google us to wear out their faces, or someone running on the front line.
Yeah. Yeah. It's amazing.
You know, we have to do seven...
Actually, I'm not too excited.
I've got a couple of... I'll ask him a poll. All right.
So one of them, one of them also... 710. 710 hearing, applicant Dorothy Page requesting a site plan approval under section 8.2.3 of the zoning bylaws to allow the extending of a non-conforming use on property located at 230 Lester Street, Auburn, Mass., map 39 parcel 25. Dorothy, please come to the table, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your project.
I'm right now, doing your work with Doc, Dorothy.
To Dorothy Page. And this is a good picture of the house.
Yeah.
In December of...
Could I just stop you for one brief moment? And a motion to open the hearing, please?
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
That's right. So in December of 2017, this house burned. There was a fire that rendered it uninhabitable. It's a two-family structure and had originally been built by two brothers. I did give you, I was able to find in the rubble the original contract for the building of the house, which built it as a duplex. And pretty much as you see it now is how it was built, is a, the original drawing I included that we found in the attic, as well as the original contract for building the house in 1960, which was built at the cost of $2,000.
Yeah, no kidding.
The house was then inherited by the granddaughter of the original owner. And then in December of 2017, it sustained a fire that rendered it uninhabitable. We were working on a house, two houses, on 236 Lester Street. And the woman that owned it came up and asked us if we would be interested in rehabbing that house. She had no insurance on it. So we spoke with her and eventually were able to come to an agreement to purchase the property. Our plan is to keep the footprint exactly as it is, except on the right-hand side, we will go up two stories and put two bedrooms in that. However, it will not increase the number of bedrooms that it currently has. It has, it's a five-bedroom house, three on one side, two on the other, and it will continue to be a five-bedroom house.
But single family?
It's your one owner.
It'd be one owner. So it'll be an owner with an apartment.
One owner with two units.
Yes.
Now, when you look at it here, you said it's on a, as it sits like that, from when I look at the print from Lester Street here, looks like that addition is on the left.
Oh, well, that's on the right, right here, from here to about here.
Right over that second double window on the right-hand side.
Because we show two cars on this print. Did you see this?
That's the garage.
That's the garage, which is under.
That's under, it's going to come up now.
Say I've got a kitchen, living room.
If you are able to scroll that around, I don't know, I mean, can, but the driveway is to the right of the house.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go. And there is a two-car garage underneath.
Right near, yeah. That's the original.
So from that point there, over about...
So the big L that comes up the other con, the left-hand side?
That's staying.
That was already there.
That's always been there.
That's been there for all, since they built it.
Since it was built in 1960.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kind of deceiving, yeah.
Yeah, because you never could see it from the...
Yeah, I didn't realize.
We didn't either. When we was working near the house, we could see the house, we went, wow, look at that big...
Well, you could look across while they were building it.
Yeah, that's over here.
And so there was a pool in the backyard, but you can see that it's L-shaped. And so that portion from the L straight to the front of the house was one apartment, and then the portion from the L to the right side was the second apartment. It had central access because it was two brothers that originally built it. So they had one porch with central access from the front of the house, as well as from the basement. And there's porches on the back of the house for each separate apartment.
That's the second egress, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The pool, we...
So there's front doors, there's back porches, and there's actually a full basement that is also accessed by both apartments.
And you said the pool is gone after?
Yeah, that was totally, that was trees...
Well, you understand the driveway?
Well, the driveway goes...
The septic system will be about where that pool is because we need to put a new septic system in that's appropriate for that house. There was a small...
Sesspool.
Sesspool that really was not going to work. So the septic system will be where that pool is, at the end of the driveway. But the driveway currently, not counting the two-car under in the garage, we can park six trucks in there, so there's plenty of space in that garage. Right to, you can't see it because it's occluded by the trees. Right at the end of the driveway, there's also a little utility shed that's there also.
You went before the zoning board already?
Yeah.
Correct. They said it was okay. You have that?
Adam? I talked to them today and yesterday also on a special topic, but they still need a variance for the porches because they're within the buffer.
Well, what we talked about at the meeting is that the porches that are there, all we're doing is splitting it, getting a little bit more space between the two. So we're not fringing on further out to the front, they're already the same thing, just that we're going to break it a little bit further left and right.
Correct. So that, right now, there's one porch, you can see there's one...
Can you show the front, Adam? From the street?
So you can see there's one porch, and the both front doors are off that porch. So what we're going to do is a porch here with that, for the entrance to that one, and the porch will be further down with an entrance to the second one, so they won't be sharing the same porch. There'll be no more porch space, and it will be no closer to the road.
Right.
It's the same setback distance from the right corner. It is, is now, and will be 18 feet from the road, and the left side will be 20 feet from the road, which is what it is now and will be with the new configuration. We just thought it would be nicer if each apartment had their own entrance. It works when you're a family, but probably not so much if you're going to rent out the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, one shovels, one dozen.
Right.
Yes. One, probably a lot of junk on the front, the other one doesn't, yeah.
Let's all reach out to that.
I don't have any thought with that.
Zoning enforcement. Caleb, will you just be safe, I don't want you to get to the building stage.
The Brooklyn CK will be here tonight, actually.
I wish, doesn't seem tonight.
Oh, is he here?
No.
No.
They, they said he, at the zoning board, they said he was probably going to be here.
He wasn't there.
But we'll catch him anyways.
Yeah, he was, he was sick or something last, at that meeting last week.
So it does require a variance?
That's what he told me, so I would talk to...
You want to stay up?
Yeah, I would talk to Caleb, just to make sure, I don't want you to get in any problems, not really to sound...
We won't touch the porches till we get that approved.
I don't have a problem with what they want to do.
No, I think it makes sense.
You already talked to water health on subjects, so those are all...
Yeah, Darlene's also, before you have the engineered protest and stuff.
Okay.
Are you going up one story, right?
Yes, it'd be two items on the second level, on the right side.
And my chance of a drawing what the house is going to look like after the...
Do you have the print?
Oh, the...
Big blue prints?
The print on... I don't think I did. We've got the porches now, exit, and I guess they...
We submitted...
Correct. Two dining room.
I saw an ovation.
Yeah. You guys should have it, we tend to, intend to, the zoning board.
Do you have a plan, do you, we don't have a...
No. We have this.
We have that.
Oh, I don't have that one.
It's on the back of the page.
I didn't see a picture of that, I can tell.
So on the site plan to progress, I have no escaping calculations. Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Did you email them?
No, I don't, it's my one thing with the variance.
It wasn't?
I mentioned the septic already, so that was...
All right. We do have the whole septic system.
Probably have to talk to the title and all that.
Steve, did you have anything? Any questions?
They mentioned that the basement's joined, you're going to separate the basement.
Yes, we will.
Okay. That was my only question.
I'm going to take a ride to Roger's.
The one with the bigger side, the right side gets...
I would assume the people on the right side.
Right? Your own side?
Yeah.
So there's two...
Play the parts.
Yep. So they're requesting waivers for topography, lighting, landscaping, greenage range calculations, and the application fee? Is there a basis for the no application fee?
I don't, I don't know what fee. I didn't pay a fee to come here, so.
So...
It didn't, I mean, I paid whatever the fee was that they told me I needed to pay. It's done.
Okay. It was written on that.
It just listed, but it might...
Yeah, it was written, yeah.
But it looks like there's only six, topography, lighting, landscaping, site plan by a professional drainage. I don't know, please, please list below the application fee. But Jerry paid it.
Yeah, I did. I did pay that.
Does the house have cutters now?
Do you want to address that?
Uh, no, they've, they'll be, but they're going to be cutters, but yeah.
And where is that going to go?
Uh...
Right side?
Yeah.
On the right side of the driveway, which way does that slope?
Down.
To the next...
To the right. To the, I think there's a river down there that comes from the lake.
Comes some of that, these cars way, there's like that side runoff, I think, that's down through there.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you'll pick it, you got the main dam, but see the wet, the brown spot in the middle?
Yeah.
Right there? That might be water that come, leaches out under the dam, there's something in there that goes under.
I can see that.
Because the main, there's a little spot, then where the main dam is up further, you can see it, see where the...
Right in here.
It's right front.
River comes down this way here.
Yeah, and it starts on the road right to the left of that vertical shot, right, yeah, right in there.
So when you go to put in your septic system, I would recommend that you put in silt fences and hay bales, or the waddles. So if you get a rainstorm in the middle, it's not running into the river.
Well, we're not going to touch it. Oh, you mean during, oh, we will during the septic, so I'm sure that, you know, suggest that, say, put your waddles in, yeah. That definitely will be so, yeah. I don't touch it.
I'll make a motion that we waive topography, lighting, landscaping, site plan, drainage, and choose a charity paid, the other paid.
Application fee.
Those five items.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Any comment from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then the second one, is the extension of the non-conforming use. And I need a motion for non-conforming use as well.
That includes them.
That's with the porches, with the setbacks.
I'd like to make a motion that they have a condition.
Okay.
That they make sure they check with the zoning board, make sure the porches are okay.
And the families, absolutely.
I mean, they already have, but the discussion last week with the zoning board was that the porches were not relevant at all in this, in their situation, they said they were within the...
Within the, they're, they're on the original footprint...
Yeah.
For the town on the tax card, it's originally shows...
They didn't think it was part of their purview.
Right.
And that should come to us.
Correct.
So, I, I'll second your motion. I don't have a problem with it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You vote? Thank you very much, thank you.
Is that it?
Yep. 720 applicant BNP Properties LLC request for site plan approval under section 3.2.7.6. 715 is continued.
I'll make you...
That's right. Maybe they'd be, yeah. So applicant Jonathan Pullen? Jonathan Pullen? No?
Have they requested a continuance?
Have they requested a continuance?
Not much, but...
This is where that existing landscaping place is.
Yeah. We're still waiting on a storm, or stormwater, yeah.
Need to, so need to continue.
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing to, what's the next meeting?
February 12th.
February 12th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, getting back to the BNP Properties, 3.2.7.6, 3.2.5.0, 3.2.5.2, and 9.4, the urban zoning bylaws for motor vehicles, people in shopping malls, and retail stores, and sales use or lunchroom restaurant. Request for special permit under section 3.2.6.11 for multiple business use, and section 3.9.2.2. Drive-up facility of the Auburn zoning bylaws use on property located at 117 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 27, parcel 8.
Well, good evening.
Closer, of the current draft page.
Pardon us, move on housekeeping, just a moment. Thank you, close the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the 710 public hearing, so Dorothy Page?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry about that.
I'll have to read, read the beginning again.
No.
Howard Stampler with BNP Properties, good evening, with Brian Nelson. There's been a fair amount of progress, conversation, involvement of peer review. Mr. Nelson kind of sort of described, I think we've hopefully reached the point where we have sort of jumped, made it over all the hurdles, and hopefully we're in position, and the board feels that way to vote on the applications. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian Nelson with any further ado.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Brian Nelson with Metro West Engineering. Been pretty active since we were here last time, on January 8th. Got some preliminary feedback from ASVAT. They are still looking at the drainage part of the application, but they gave us some comments on the entrance, and so we've incorporated those into the plans that we submitted last week. Kind of pursue into the request of DPW. We did a couple of extra test pits on site, and those were witnessed by the peer reviewer, those were done last Wednesday. We had, prior to doing the test pits, we had kind of stretched out the front infiltration system, made it a little bit longer and narrower to address that comment, and then basically went out, did the testing, and found no surprises there. And so we put together a letter which we submitted last Thursday with a revised set of plans, basically going through the outstanding comments, so just those were included on this letter. Basically distinguished the first comment and response, and then the second comment and response. And happy to go through those if you want, or if there are any questions you have on any of those issues. And again, I'll just point to, this is just the presentation board for the project, again with Washington Street over on the left-hand side, you know, basically north going up to the top left-hand corner of the...
It's on the back of the page.
I did see a picture of my file. So I'm going to go and tell you about it.
So, on the site plan to progress. Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, it was my one thing with the various.
It wasn't.
I mentioned the septic already, so that was.
All right. We do have the whole septic system.
Probably talk to the title.
Steve, did you have anything, any questions?
They mentioned that the basement is joined, you're going to separate the basement.
Yes, we will.
Okay. That was my only question.
Who gets the two cars to rush?
The one with the bigger side. The right side gets.
I would assume the people on the right side.
Right? You're all set?
Yeah.
So, there's two.
Play the part.
Yep. So they're requesting waivers for topography, lighting, landscaping, drainage range calculations, and the application fee. Is there a basis for the no application fee?
Um, I don't, I don't know what fee. I, I didn't pay a fee to come here.
So.
It didn't, I mean, I paid whatever the fee was that they told me I needed to pay. It's done.
Okay.
It just listed, but it might.
Yeah, it was in the document.
But it looks like there's only six: topography, lighting, landscaping, site plan by a professional drainage. Although, please, please list below the application fee. But Jared paid it.
Yeah.
I did. I did pay that.
Does the house have cutters now?
Do you want to address that?
Uh, no, they've been, but they're going to be cutters, but yeah.
Where is that going to go? Right side?
Yep.
On the right side of the driveway, which way does that slope?
Down. To the right. To the, uh, I think there's a river down there that comes from the lake.
Comes some of that, these cars way, there's like that side runoff, I think, that's down.
Can you hear it?
I'm not sure you'll pick it. You got the main dam, but see the wet, the brown spot in the middle?
Yeah.
Right there? That might be water that come leaches out under the dam. There's something in there that goes under.
I can see that.
Because the main, there's a little spot, then where the main dam is up further, you can see it. See the?
Right in here.
It's right front.
River comes down this way here.
Yeah, and it starts on the road right to the left of that vertical shot, right, yeah, right near.
So, when you go to put in your septic system, I would recommend that you put in silt ponds and hay vales or waddles. So if you get a rainstorm in the middle, it's not running into the river.
Well, we're not going to touch it. Oh, you mean during, oh, we will during the septic, so I'm sure that, you know, suggest that say, put your waddles in, yep. That definitely will be so, yep. I don't.
I'll make a motion that we waive, uh, topography, lighting, landscaping, site plan, drainage, and she said she already paid.
She paid the application fee.
Those five items.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Any comment from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the second one. And it's the extension of the non-conforming use. And I need a motion for non-conforming use as well. That's with the porches, with the setbacks.
That's the condition.
Okay.
And they make sure they check with the zoning board to make sure the porches are okay.
And the families, absolutely.
I mean, they already have, but the discussion last week with the zoning board was that the porches were not relevant at all in this, in their situation, they said they were within the.
Within the, they're, they're on the original footprint.
Yeah.
Um, for the town on the tax card. It's originally shows.
They didn't think it was part of their purview.
Right.
And that should come to us.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I, I'll second your motion. I don't have a problem.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You vote?
Thank you very much, thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
720 applicant, B&amp;P Properties LLC, request for site plan approval under section 3.2.7.6. 715 is continued. That's right. So applicant Jonathan Pooleen? Jonathan Pooleen? No?
Have they requested a continuance?
Have they requested a continuance?
Not much, please.
This is where that existing landscaping place is.
We're still waiting on a stormwater.
So, what are you, I need to continue.
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing to, uh, what's the next meeting?
February 12th?
February 12th, 2019.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, getting back to the B&amp;P Properties. 3.2.7.6, 3.2.5.0, 3.2.5.2, and 9.4, the urban zoning bylaws for motor vehicles, people on shop use and retail stores, and sales use or lunchroom restaurant. Request for special permit under section 3.2.6.11 for multiple business use and section 3.9.2.2. Drive up facility of the urban zoning bylaws use on property located at 117 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 27, parcel 8.
Well, good evening.
Close the, of the current page.
Pardon us, move on housekeeping, just a moment. Thank you, close the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the 710 public hearing, Dorothy Page.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I thought that.
I'll have to read, read the beginning again.
No.
Howard Stampler with B&amp;P Properties, good evening, with Brian Nelson. There's been a fair amount of progress, conversation, involvement of peer review. Mr. Nelson kind of sort of described, I think we've hopefully reached the point where we have sort of jumped, made it over all the hurdles and hopefully we're in position and the board feels that way to vote on the applications. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian Nelson with any further ado and.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Brian Nelson with Metro West Engineering. Been pretty active since we were here last time, on January 8th. Got some preliminary feedback from ASTOT. They are still looking at the drainage part of the application, but they gave us some comments on the entrance and so we've incorporated those into the plans that we submitted last week. Kind of pursuant to the request of DPW. We did a couple of extra test pits on site and those were witnessed by the peer reviewer. Those were done last Wednesday. We had, prior to doing the test pits, we had kind of stretched out the front infiltration system, made it a little bit longer and narrower to address that comment and then basically went out to the testing and found no surprises there. And so we put together a letter which we submitted last Thursday with a revised set of plans, basically going through the outstanding comments, so just those were included on this letter. Basically distinguished the first comment and response, and then the second comment and response. And happy to go through those if you want, or if there are any questions you have on any of those issues. And again, I'll just point to, um, this is just the presentation board for the project, again with Washington Street over on the left-hand side, you know, basically north going up to the top left-hand corner of the page.
Adam, can you put that up?
We basically pulled the driveway entrance into the property a little bit just to get a wider radius, leaving the property going in the northbound direction, so the two entry radii got bigger and basically added a division line and stop line. Those were all basically pursuant to the Mast D O T review.
And was the, did they grant the access permit?
They're still looking at the drainage part. The stormwater report we submitted was the same one we gave you guys, about as thick as a phone book, so they wanted to go through that in a little bit more detail.
Okay.
Just, um, this was the infiltration system we revised, so it was more square in shape prior, so we made it a little bit longer and rectangular, basically to run with the contours and to, um, basically provide greater separation to seasonal high ground water elevations.
And it's not going to runoff onto Route 20 now?
That's correct. There are, um, with either system, um, basically we've got pretty significant reductions in the amount of flow to the street in the post-development conditions, so DOT has indicated that they're happy with that. We approached DOT about the, basically connection of any overflow into a street drainage structure, and that's what they're taking a look at. They're not huge proponents of doing that, but they are going to take a look at that.
Okay. And in comment seven, I think, I looked at the proposed driveway, that one's also comment seven, that's your removal permit. Has that been obtained, under comment seven?
It was actually a memo that was issued by the building commissioner. That was issued on January 11th and it cited in our letter. Basically, this project, and this was our feeling all along, that this would be a project that would be exempted from the earth removal bylaw just because there's a site plan approval application and a special permit application that's set forth with the board. I might have a copy of that.
How much year are we moving?
Forty-nine hundred.
Forty-nine hundred cubic yards? This is my copy, if you'd like to look at it.
Adam, isn't it over? Five hundred yards in a row?
Yeah, we talked to Caleb because we're already going into site plan, we didn't give you for extra special permit in this regard. Caleb, I talked to Ryan about this and don't think we need to do anything further.
Within the earth removal bylaws, section 1215, first section A, paragraph 2, there's an exemption granted, basically, where projects are undergoing site plan review. So that was, like I said, that was our original take and we reviewed that with.
These changed after a Loos decision around that time, I think. There were some changes that came as a result of Loos and what they were going to be doing.
Yeah, is it additional comment, earth removal finished grade?
There was some exemptions.
Ten feet above natural groundwater level.
Which, ten feet above natural groundwater is critically impossible anywhere to be ten feet above ground level.
Okay. Right, so that's that one. So, under comment nine, since there are two buildings on the site, it would seem maybe pedestrian traffic between the buildings, consideration should be given to establishing ADA accessible route on the site, and it says stairway has been added.
And there's a second follow-up comment to that. Basically, that was also addressed in the January 11th memo from the building inspector.
The building inspector is saying not required.
Yeah.
Because they're giving them handicap access on the ends of the building.
Yes.
Small side, so they don't, obviously, I don't understand.
So moving between the two buildings, you'd have to probably get into a vehicle to go over to access the other side.
Which you may anyway, if you were.
Yeah. I don't know how much I agree with that, but okay, with the building inspector is okay with it, I defer to him. All right. Anything else?
Comments 10, 11, and 12, um, basically were, um, I think, issued by the peer reviewer prior to our last meeting where we, the board voted on the landscape waivers. Those waivers had been granted. Comment 13 deals with, um, light pole fixture, which we had submitted, cut sheets of those at the initial planning board hearing, so I thought we were all set on that one. And comment 14 gets into the soil testing and a little bit of the, um, kind of the meat and potatoes of the groundwater elevations we observed at the initial round of testing and then subsequent rounds. We did put a little section through the infiltration system in the front, um, basically to demonstrate that, um, there won't be any, basically interference with the infiltration system as groundwater kind of vibrates down the slope of the property. So the testing we did basically validated that, that our system was above and not going to be in conflict with that. And I think there was one more. Comments 16 pertain to, um, mounting analysis, um, which we've provided, we've performed those calculations, we're attached to the back of this letter. Looking at the table in the stormwater management requirement for any mound underneath the system who dissipated within 72 hours, um, basically that has been demonstrated in this table.
Just like to understand.
That basically any mound in the system would be insignificant after 48 hours, so would only further draw it down after 72.
Mr. Brooks? Mr. Chairman, can you just ask him to, I asked him to, we just want to explain as well it reads from three down to.
And that is the.
This is the letter from Caleb, addressed to the planning board. Is this the one you just gave?
It is, correct.
Because on the back it says. Well, I'll shoot it down to you and start at three and go down to, uh, where it ends at A. I just, it just seems a little confusing, but I just want to be able to understand it.
Okay. So starting with three, um, there is no indications to the amount of earthwork involved with this project. Section 9.4.3.1 requires the volume of earth removal to be computed. The amount to be removed exceeds 500 cubic yards and a removal permit may be required. So that was the original comment, um, from the peer reviewer. The italicized comment is the next paragraph, and that was our response to the original letter. Basically, earthwork calculations have been performed and are shown on the proposed grading plans, sheet C400 and 401. Net earthwork for the proposed site plan is approximately 4,900 cubic yards, cut.
So that would, to me, says that we do need an earth removal permit.
I do have a copy of the bylaw.
Then it goes, what was the last part that it said?
Okay. So then, the bold comment below is the follow-up comment from the peer reviewer. This comment has been addressed. However, it should be noted that one of the requirements for an earth removal permit is that the finish grade on the site be at least 10 feet above the natural groundwater level. Since the finish grade of the site is not currently, is not wholly 10 feet above the natural groundwater level, relief may be needed. And then basically, it goes into that section A2 dot 2, and basically he, uh, this is the exemption, this is the language from the bylaw. And that exemption states, removal incidental to construction on a lot where such removal is explicitly allowed under a valid building permit, site plan approval, or under agreements governing road construction and approved subdivision. So I believe we would fall under the site plan approval. And I reviewed this with Mr. Hodgson when we were on the site, and I think that there may have been.
I just wanted for a better understanding for myself. And the fact that the site as it currently exists prior to any earth removal is still, that, at that time is not 10 feet above groundwater.
That's correct.
So you'd have to almost add material to bring it to that.
That's correct.
So.
I guess the point, it's just a little, the removal of the earth, that part, it's hard to sort of jive with, like you said, have to add earth before you remove it, but the piece that sort of, you know, I don't say we hang our hat, but that seems relevant is that the exception is that if the earth removal is incidental to the approval, then there's an exemption from getting the permit. That's, that's the way we would read.
Did you say that you were going to put some of it down on the back where it drops way down, or are you going to just move?
Basically, the removal is all related to, the, the earthwork remaining is pretty much balanced. The, the removal basically is the topsoil, and we've got a footprint of, you know, two buildings and driveway and parking areas, so that, that earthwork is basically associated with just the removal of the loom that needs to be stripped and taken away from the site.
That was the one that I questioned John last time. What did we find out?
You can't do that, you can't take it out of town.
Yeah, so we realize that, and I think we'd be, you know, certainly with a condition of, um, of an approval is, I think, to specifically note that, that any topsoil removed has to stay within town boundaries.
And if you don't have a place, I know in the past, other people have donated to a spot that the town uses it up by the landfill, if you don't have any.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, we were storing a lot of loom up at the former landfill site.
Okay.
So, uh. We would make that a priority to make sure we know where the topsoil is going to go.
You would say it's a territory.
And, uh, Bill Coyle, you should ask Bill Coyle, the highway superintendent.
Okay. Do you want this copy back for?
Got a copy.
Okay.
Thanks, I can send it back up. I'll edit it in a few seconds.
All right, so we're on comment 17. We just finished 16.
Comment 17 is another portion of that stormwater section that, as I mentioned, that Mast D O T is still looking at, and there's a portion of the driveway from here down, um, just due to the grading of the site, basically that would flow out onto Washington Street. And so we've, kind of as our initial submit, and then kind of again at the request of the peer reviewer, we made Mast D O T painfully aware of that, and we just want to make sure they're okay with it. If they're not, we could probably add a structure or two down here, but in light of basically 70% of the runoff, um, in comparison to the existing condition being eliminated from flowing onto Washington Street, we feel like we've got a pretty significant reduction. So that's, uh, the one issue that we just wanted to give DOT a little bit more time to process on.
Where's the slope on the end that's coming from the Washington Street?
Slope is relatively flat. Um, basically from here in about 30 feet is, I think, a two and a half or a 3% grade to allow a leveling pad, and then we go up at about 8%, where we level off at the intersection, and then go up at about 8% again.
I can check those grades around the grading plan.
Does that, street, stormwater, street drainage on Route 20, does that end up in the flood diversion control channel?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I would assume it probably does.
If it does, then, I mean, that's why they have least considerable.
What's happened with Mast D O T is, you know, basically any runoff, as it leaves a site, they've kind of taken a, you know, a little bit of a harder line on, so, you know, again, the stormwater report we prepared, it complies with all the DEP regs and it's, again, I think, very generous in terms of keeping as much runoff on site and getting it back into the ground, um, but there's some subjectivity there too, and so that's one of the things that I think we'll, we'll just continue to work with.
D O T, yeah. Anything else, John?
I just want to tell them thanks for putting these through the bylaw.
My brain still thinks a little barren, so, but no problem.
Let's continue.
So I think we're on to comment 19. Comment 19 just was another, um, issue that had come up originally, and I thought I had gotten them, but I had forgotten one, um, connection basically, which is some of the connections of the angles of drain pipes. So we had a couple that were intersecting at acute angles where we wanted those angles to be 90 degrees or greater, so we've addressed that as well.
Yeah, the mail that was mentioned in the last meeting, correct.
Right, okay.
And then there were a couple new comments, um, and again, basically that's just the original comment, then a response in bold. There was one note that we added at the request of the peer reviewer about the removal of a couple layers of soil for the rear infiltration system, get a more restrictive layer of soil, um, above the more permeable soils, so we've added notes on a couple different sheets to specify the removal of more restrictive soils, and last comment basically deals with, we had actually on the plan and the drainage report had some of the numbers of outlets from the infiltration systems mislabeled, so we corrected those, and, um, again, these two comments I reviewed with Mr. Hodgson when we were on the site, last meeting.
Are there any public comments? John?
I just think with the soil removal that you jump with Caleb, maybe get a permit from Caleb, I believe, just to make sure that.
We spoke on him, he was to not, not require a special permit for that.
Okay, just want to make sure. And all the comments.
We need to condition the topsoil and.
Yeah, the topsoil stays in town.
And the report from Mast D O T wants we say, we have that, we need a copy of that. Anything else?
D O T.
Yeah, as long as they're, yeah. Do you think anything else? No. Make any further comments?
We talked about the fences and the other stuff.
The fences, huh?
All right, let's move to public hearing. Close the public hearing, but also.
There's no islands in the parking area, right?
That's correct.
Nice.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let me draw all those.
All right. entertain a motion to approve with the conditions that we've.
Mast D O T report and the earth removal stays in town.
The topsoil stays in town, okay. Make a motion, anyone make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate your luck. Thank you.
730 applicant, A&amp;M Realty Trust, a request for site plan approval under section 3.2.7.1 under zoning bylaws for stone and granite retail display and sale of estate on property located at 872 South 33rd Avenue, Mass., map 65, parcel 19. Could you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Zach Littor with H S and T Group. I'm here tonight representing A&amp;M Realty. So quite a bit of time has passed since our last meeting, I believe we were before you lasted, before the holidays, and at that point, we didn't, we have not received, like, greatest comments and also just general comments from the board. and also just general comments from the board. At that meeting, I did gather some comments from you folks, and we did receive Graves' comments, which we have addressed, and we submitted those revised plans as well as a comment letter last week for you guys to see. I think some of the major concerns, one was that we did not have a landscaping plan, which now we do, which is shown on our first sheet of our plans. There was a couple drainage comments from Graves Engineering. Basically, it had to do with requiring soil testing, which had been done. We did adjust the system based off of that testing. Basically, all it entailed us doing was providing a shallower system, so it increased the area, I think, by about 11 feet, so not anything too crazy. So that was done. Trying to think anything else major.
So landscaping plan, no semi trailer trucks?
Right, yep. That was one of the comments from Graves as well, that they believe the site could accommodate single unit trucks and not semis, so the intent of this, there will be no semi trucks, because basically all it is will be a single unit, like box truck, they'll bring in a couple slabs of granite or stone, and they'll come in, which Graves and us agree with that, this the site is designed to handle that. They don't typically get, you know, massive shipments of granite or, you know, stone materials, so it's typically brought in maybe three or four at a time, so that there shouldn't be any need for a semi truck.
And then the comment number four, both the utility poles and light fixtures?
Yep, so, so all of the existing utility poles along Southwood Street there, they actually all have light fixtures on them, which will, they will continue to utilize, and also the proposed building there, they're gonna fix a light on the, you know, face of the building to illuminate the front of the building as well. So we're pretty comfortable with the, you know, the existing lighting. I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with the old site, it was lit up pretty well at night, so lighting shouldn't be a concern.
So you're saying the utility poles gave the light for the site?
Yep, there's actually...
It doesn't have a lot of depth to it. What is the existing building? It's not the house that's way up?
No, so there's actually no existing structures onsite anymore at all. There was a smaller, like shack, shed type deal, and then there was a bunch of greenhouses, but that's all since been removed. That was actually removed before my client even purchased the property. But you could see on the existing utility poles, there is light fixtures that run basically along from that sign that run down. I wouldn't say to the end of the site, but basically to the end of our parking lot where our parking is going to be. So basically every, I'd say...
Between with the one that we see there and coming back towards the gas station, how many more poles is there? One?
One, two, three. There's three.
Well, that one doesn't have any fixture on it, does it?
Yep.
Yeah, they do.
Yep. There's actually one in the back corner, too, but I believe that one's been removed, that's been...
That was on the site.
That was on the site, it's been removed? Yeah.
Okay.
And that's actually beyond the scope of where we're actually gonna do it. So where you see that last utility pole with the fixture on it, that's about where the end of the turnaround area would be, and the dumpster location's going to be, so that'll be kind of beyond where the parking would be. That's, that portion of the site's not actually gonna be utilized, it's gonna be left as open space.
Okay, number five is the snow storage location, which...
Yep, that's been added on sheet two of the plan set, just a dedicated area. I did put it on the upper, higher side of the site, just to allow it, hopefully, maybe to percolate a little bit towards the parking lot and not put it towards the wetland side, so it has a little bit of time to run before it reaches the wetlands. Also, another concern that was brought up by the board was the number of parking spaces for employees, so I did speak with my client about that, and he said typically there is only one employee that works, but he said there might be a case where, you know, somebody's working in the office space above, or during a delivery, you know, somebody might be out there assisting them, and they might have somebody in the store. So we did adjust the parking just a little bit, as you can see if you look on your first sheet. So we ended up adding another parking space, just in case to accommodate that, so there wouldn't be any concern. We did update the summary table, and also we updated the drainage report and the system to accommodate that extra impervious surface. So then now there's 19 total spaces before we came in with 18? Yeah, correct. Yeah, so those vital living area.
And there was hydrology calculations and stormwater management, number six. Yes, Mr. Brooks?
It already had infiltration systems and...
It had no existing drainage system, so we are, yeah, we are imploding in.
It almost looked like that they were already existing.
Right. Fortunately for the site, given its proximity to the wetlands, the soils on site are actually pretty good, they're A soils, so we do have quite a large system there, too, which will account for a lot of infiltration, so we don't feel like runoff should really be an issue. We do have an overflow, just in case.
You're down a little bit from road level, right?
Yes, we are, yep.
And then it's the swamp and the wetlands.
Correct, right, and then we do have a quite a lar, a fairly large system, which you can see where our test pits locations are, and then we have outlet pipe, you know, in case of a large storm event, if the system were to become overwhelmed, that will downfall towards wetland with a riprap area that will protect the ground and slow water down, so, you know, squaring and things like that shouldn't be an issue. That's been sized and designed, too, so that's all a part of the hydrology calculations, too, so you can see how it's sized and calculated as well.
We did send this back out to peer review last week, or I got this last week, in the weeks, we're doing secondary reviews.
Yep.
Going back with the new revised site plans.
And the red waters says renewed?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that should be towards, yeah, it's right near the curb cut.
I see it. It's right in front of the flag.
There's also a water gate to the right of that, that has an existing 2-inch PVC coming for their water service. So the hope is to tap into that line, if that line, we feel, isn't good enough from overtime for being stubbed, we're actually gonna replace it and just connect right to the water gate, which that's what we discussed with Mr. Smith from the water department, which he was, he was happy. Also, too, he wanted a pre-construction meeting before the sewers go in, before the water goes in, which a note has been added to the plan that there, any contractor is required to meet with them, make sure their connections are up to par, and the procedures are the way that they want it done.
Any other questions?
No.
John? So we'll have to wait for the response from Graves Engineering and continue adhering to the next meeting in February 12. Entertaining one to continue to February 12?
I'll make a motion to continue February 12.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the update. 7th, we filed the fourth amendment to the planning board regulations to special permits, site plan approvals, and a new regulation for site construction inspection, revised fee schedule to special permits, site plan approvals, subdivisions, and any other planning ward fees. Adam, alternative review?
Well, thanks. I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at everything I sent you. Met several contractors to go over this for the very day, make sure the fees made sense. I read the fees passed, Julie Jacobson and Ed, are there, okay, and they're fine with it. I met with Caleb, Darlene, and Bill Coyle, and Joanna Peck, and several other people regarding those regulations, also met with Bill Coyle and Joanna Peck, and about the construction and inspection rules that were gonna hopefully all be considered going in place. We've kind of, that's a brand new thing for the town, I think it's important for it to, anything being built is being built properly in the way we want it to be built. Probably gonna have a outside peer reviewer make sure that it's being constructed appropriately. Probably the same reviewer that's doing the peer reviewer will make sense, if they're already familiar with the project, and if we decide on eventual single peer reviewer streamline the process a bit. So, and I'll do comments, corrections from over here. If anybody else has anything to add. You can always change these all day, I don't, they shouldn't be on what I'm done, regulations, the fees, we update them every six months, a year, two years, whenever something comes up that we technically treat, we should be getting. This is a big change, what they were.
Because you said you went, what, back to 2008 and didn't see, could not find any group changes to the fees?
Yeah.
So...
The regulations that dated 2004.
And these basically outline the last dates each one of these individual towns changed their fees, right?
Yeah. Most of the towns changed fairly recently.
Was...
Either by reason or the most reasonable?
Quite a variation here. Like where our consultant fee is, that's only the deposit. If it's more than that, so that's kind of irrelevant, but nobody has it at 7,500.
Yeah, that's something that we haven't been taking in regularly is the deposit, so that's something we're gonna take in, at least for 99% of projects, for example, the one on the door of the page, probably would take something in as a deposit, it's a small, major review, but everything else definitely needs review.
Well, that's what aids us.
Right.
You know? Helps to make sure that we cover everything in.
Well, I love the idea of having that person that's gonna follow that project from beginning to end as well, because we've, our experience has been in the past that not everything is done to the way that was approved.
Correct.
And so I think that's going to, and it probably will free Caleb up slightly, too, because then he's got somebody else to assist with.
And that's what their consultant fee is for. Yeah. Because we condition and then just do what they want.
The inspector will be doing all of the site, this will work, yeah, Kale will still have to do the billing.
Billing, right.
This guy would take, I guess, the bill, it's a perfect job for retiring, it's a perfect job for this guy.
Basically taking it off of Bill's desk is what he was doing. You can't get out there and check on stuff.
He has other manpower.
Right, exactly.
More of the funding.
The lot release fee currently 125, proposing 100.
Yeah. I think because we were increasing the subdivision fees so much, we just kind of dropped it a bit.
Which one was that, Steve?
Lot release. Lot release, 125 down to 100.
I don't have any problem with keeping it the same.
But the definitive plan jumped up quite a bit, and also the...
Yeah, I kind of like the idea of the way it happens is with the maximum of lot release. I'm sorry, um, yes.
The max 100, yeah.
I think that's fair.
I get 10 lots, it's 12,500.
Right, if you're putting a 12 lot subdivision. Yeah, 12,000 bucks, too great. She was out with 1,500. So 125 per lot, you're getting every lot. I think we keep it the same. Like I said, on average, we're still a part, getting here.
What about the $12 per line of foot of subdivision road? That's frusby. I get tied to the lot just the length of the road.
Yeah, that could, could add 12 lot pretty fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
1,000 piece, 12 brand.
Yeah.
Any subdivision come to mind? I could figure one.
Yeah, get rid of the max, just the per lot, right?
Yep.
It's a lot release, just per lot?
Yeah, you've got that $100 per lot, there's no max on there.
Well, in A and B, they're only 100 foot of frontage, so you'd be getting, it'd be like 12.
For a 20 lot subdivision, it's 2,500 bucks, it's not gonna leak or break anybody.
No.
If it's more than reasonable. One of the questions that I had, Adam, was on the front page. It says underground utilities, so the inspector will, they're very coordinated with each specific utility, their partner requirements.
Sorry?
It says you have to coordinate with each specific utility for their particular requirements. The project I'm on now, I know it's a public job, but the state DPU has to come in and look at it, especially electrical. So I wrote that's, because this is all private work, that doesn't pertain, I'm not sure how that works.
Okay.
Have to do that for electrical or plumbing.
State's gonna come in.
I think it may be because of a public job. If we're running out of the ground electrical line from a pole to a building or a subdivision, I don't know if it would be the town electrical inspector, it may be, I don't know, it's something I might want to ask someone.
Yeah, we can take that. So you're asking by whom? Who is that woman that's going to do that?
Correct. I mean, for the sewer, it'll be the sewer department, for the water, it'll be the water department.